The meeting for May 24th, Planning Commission meeting. So can we get a roll call?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Sullivan-Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Lo? Commissioner Gross?
Here.
Commissioner Kielty?
Here.
Vice Chair DeBolt?
Here.
And Chair Andrew?
Here. Let's go ahead and stand if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's move on to oral communications. At this time, any individuals in the audience may address the Planning Commission and speak to an item or subject matter that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please sign in on the sheet. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes. Seeing nobody coming up, go ahead and go to the approval of the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
I've got some corrections. Okay. I've got them typed out, but I'll read them quickly. On page two of eight, paragraph that is one, two, three, four, about number six down, it begins associate planner. Okay. It says the project should read 1898 square feet, and in brackets, staff report was correct at 1752. Actually, the project should read 1872 square feet, the dwelling unit, and the staff report was incorrect at 1971 square feet. Okay. And then on the next change, farther down, it begins vice chair DeBolt expressed, says I expressed concern over the code requiring additional half-space. I said I expressed, in reviewing the video, was I expressed concern over the parking calculation. And then he or I, he read the code requiring parking and noted the staff report omitted the parenthetic example of an other room, which included a dinner office. He then stated the other rooms could be counted, should be counted at half-space each, resulting in total of 15 spaces, and then ultimately thought that the project would need to be redesigned to accommodate the extra spaces. And then, following that, there's no mention of Development Services Director Mendoza's references to the memo. And I have here, I'd like to see, and I took this off the video. Development Services Director Mendoza stated staff was challenged with what is readily used as a bedroom, mainly the term readily, because there is no definition of a bedroom. Mr. Mendoza commented about a memo created by staff in order to address this issue consistently on future projects. I'd like that inserted in, or...
Where would that go, Art?
Right after the, my concern, after staff and Planning Commission discussed what the code stipulates as to what qualifies as a sleeping room.
And you're going to...
I'll give this to you, yes. I just want to read. And then on item 7B, on page five of eight, where it begins, this is third paragraph, vice chair DeBolt questioned footnote 11B. It should say vice chair DeBolt quoted footnote 11B in table 2.03 in the development standards, where it states, "Any portion of a structure located within 100 feet of the R1 zone property shall not exceed 2 stories and 30 feet." That's it.
Can I make a motion to, for big corrections to be added to the minutes?
Second.
I was absent. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Absent. Epstein.
So...
Yeah, four.
Five in favor, one absent.
No, four.
John.
You're okay.
Sorry, where?
To the consent calendar, which at this point, there is none, so we can move on to the public hearing, which is a consideration of a five-unit residential condominium development, application for tentative tract map, conditional use permit, and site plan review at 3751 to 3755 Farquhar Avenue. We have a staff report on this.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Not much has changed. The applicant hasn't supplied any new drawings for you to analyze, or for us to analyze and for you to review. You just have a small staff report explaining that, and then you have last month's staff report. The applicant is in the lobby, and they're prepared to try to address some of the concerns, and they wanted to introduce some topics of discussion on their own. With that, we have nothing more to report. It is a open hearing already.
So I don't have to reopen it?
No, you don't. It's still open from the last meeting, but with that, Nick, will you be talking?
Yeah.
So applicant Nick Senfakellis is in the...
Can we continue with, I have a few questions.
Okay.
Along this. I mean, I don't know if I want to...
You want to hear them first, or you want to ask your question first?
Yeah, let's just get the questions out, I think.
Okay. Can we take just a second to...
I have a question for the applicant.
Oh, okay.
As well. So it's kind of like, kind of like where we left off, but didn't get there.
Okay.
Okay. So, let him get all set up.
These aren't all the same. Are they all different?
No, they're all the same.
No. That one's in yours, R1. These are copies of each?
No. I tried to print them, but the resolution is just horrible.
So your intent is that these are all the same?
Right.
And... When each of these topics come up, introduce the item, and I'll pass them on. Otherwise, you're going to get confused.
Okay.
So provide us an aerial photo, a map of the drainage ditch, and a blown-up section of the zone. So get some shot.
Okay.
You might be wanting to...
So you said you had a question?
Yeah, I've got...
Excuse me, Steven?
Yes?
You're in the line. Can you move a little bit? Thanks. Sorry about that.
If...
Thanks.
You want the chair?
Yeah. I'd like to, since we're continuing the meeting from the last time, I have a part from where we ended with respect to the height, which, if you don't mind, I think I'd like to, well, for me, I'd like to continue with the other aspects of the project, and then, I guess, at that point, get to whatever the applicant has to present.
Okay.
I have some questions of the applicant and some of staff regarding some of the, some other issues associated with the plans, since this is all that we have. I just want to wade, I'd like to wade through it, and then go from there. So this is with respect to the plans for the applicant. On, I noticed at the bottom of the pages, you've got a scale, it says, some of one-eighth to a foot, one-eighth of an inch to a foot, one-quarter of an inch to a foot. What I want to know is, are the drawings to scale? So...
They, they are meant to be to scale, yes. But they're dimensioned, so if the scale doesn't match, you have to go with what the architect wrote for a dimension.
So are they, so they're not...
They're to scale.
They are to scale, I mean, they are to scale.
They're to scale. But if you take a measure, if you take a scale on it, you should rely on, if there's a dimension given, anybody who's building would rely on the dimension.
Okay, so if there's no dimension, then we need to rely on the scale?
Right.
Okay, fine. And then, one other question. On the rear building, would be building C, there's what looks like a window on that, on the elevation that, see, would be the, says right side, this on page 10, sheet 10, would be a window into the garage, right here, on sheet 10. You don't have a copy of it?
No, that can't be right.
At the bottom left? That's a window into the entry. Right?
Sheet 10.
To the left of the garage door, Art? Okay.
Trying to figure out...
Oh, that's a sign. Oh, the other, up here.
Up there. You've got the rear facing north. It would be on the side...
Is he talking about this?
It's a light.
No, it would be on the, it would be on the driveway side.
Well, this is the outside.
Yeah, and that's the right side of the building.
Well, what is it, underneath the drawing you're referring to, what does it say?
Page, it's on sheet 10.
Got it.
It says, it's under the stucco soffit.
On the, where it says right side?
Yeah, right side. Above right side, there's a, looks like a window.
That's a window from the garage facing the driveway.
Okay.
To provide some light into the garage.
Okay. I was just curious. Okay. All right. Okay. And then, okay, for staff, I have a question. In the application for a CUP, it says the application shall be accompanied by detailed and fully dimensioned site plans, architectural drawings, sketches, elevations, and floor plans. Are these plans fully, are these plans detailed and fully dimensioned?
Yeah.
Then, if they're fully dimensioned, then why are there lines and areas on here that don't have dimensions?
Question.
That's for you, that's for you, Tom.
Well, I'll let the applicant address that, and the architect address that, sir.
Art?
Well, remember, these are planning plans, not building plans. So nobody's going to be building from these plans. There'll be another submittal, which is the same as these plans, that'll be fleshed out and completed. The pertinent dimensions in these plans are the overall building sizes, heights, shapes, setbacks, et cetera. There's really no need to dimension, for instance, the size of a window at this point, if that's what, do you have something specific?
No, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm, I guess my question, well, I'll express the concern. The concern is, it gets into distances for, let's say, the trash enclosure. There's no dimensions on the trash enclosure at all.
Well...
Yet, yet we have, we have a dimension, or we have a line that is making up part of the private open space, where our code says that there shall be no dimension less than 10 feet. And so, going from building C to building D is a distance that would require the distance from one building to the wall of the trash enclosure to be 10 feet on both sides. There's no dimension, and then you have the width of the trash enclosure, which is required to be 6 by 9.
5 by 8.
5 by 8 is the interior dimension.
Okay.
And you have a 6-inch block wall, so that adds a foot to all sides, it adds a foot to the width, and adds a foot to the length. So if I add up 10 feet and 9 feet for a trash enclosure, and then 10 feet to get to the other wall for this one side of the open space, that's 29 feet.
This is 28 feet.
Hold on.
I'm coming up with the number of feet that's required.
Yeah, I'm just saying, from garage, it's 28, it's dimension there.
But it's only, well, it's dimension, yeah, well, 28 feet is from garage to garage, but if you go below that line...
Oh, I see.
You have your private open space, and there's a bump out from the garage. We don't know how far that is, because that's not dimensioned either, so...
Well, the bump out from the garage is dimensioned on the floor plans.
I'm looking at what I'm looking at.
Further back, I think, Art.
All right. So...
Hey, Art. Real quick.
Can we get the drawing up on here, and I'll address it?
Would you, by any chance, since he did say it was to scale, were you able to check and see if you were to use the scale?
Yeah, I did, I did put a scale on the trash enclosure. The exterior dimension is 5 feet by 70.
So, the dimension is required, it's to be 10 by 10 clear, it's 10 by 10, not 10 in here. This is more than 10, and this is more than 10. This is 28 feet, minus 4 is 24, that's 12 feet. This sticks out 2 feet here, and that sticks out 2 feet there. 28 minus 4 is 24, divided by 2 is 12. So this is 12 feet, this is 12 feet, and this is at least 10 feet, if not, I don't know, 11 or 12. But, point being that this is the private open space that's required, 10 by 10, this is extra private open space, and all of this is extra private open space, and all of this is extra private open space.
Well, I will, without beleagering the point, our code says that each, each dimension shall be no less than 10 feet.
No, it says...
Shall be no less than 10 feet. That is what the code says.
So can you have a shape that's more than a rectangle?
I'm telling you what the, what the dimensions are. If, and then if we want to go to the vertical, that's not dimensioned on the plans, if I put a scale on that vertical, it is exactly 10 feet by the scale, but since the trash enclosure is not properly, if I use the scale on the trash enclosure, your enclosure is only 5 feet on the, on the exterior, and you need to have 6, so you're short another foot.
Well, I'm...
I'm finding it difficult.
We can certainly address this with staff and show a more detailed...
Well, I think it needs to be addressed, really, right now, to be quite honest with you.
Let's address it right now.
And I think it goes back to the fact that we don't have fully dimensioned plans.
This fits the trash...
It's...
Yeah. Without, was required for them, right?
Yeah.
But if you don't have the space on the, if you don't have the space to make the required 10-foot dimension that's separating these two private spaces, then I, if we can't rectify that or get an answer tonight, it's certainly not going to change until they get the working drawings.
See, do you know where that is in the code that you scroll in? The 10 by...
Yeah.
Just so I could read it. So it really fits the plan, I didn't know where he put the end to the back door. Thank you.
Number 10. Residential condominiums.
17. what?
A10.
Page 20 of 49, if you're looking at the clip further back, I think.
Private open space.
So, I guess I don't understand what you're saying there, Art.
Private open space. An adjoining private open space shall be provided for each condominium unit with no dimension less than 10 feet.
Right.
So every one of these dimensions that's making up, well, I'll just say this, there's not one dimension on these plans that shows, you know, for the private open space. It's not one. Okay? I would think that for staff, for us, if you're going to review the plan, how do you determine whether they have met the requirement of 10, of no less than 10 feet, if you don't have it dimensioned on the plans?
We interpret it differently than you do, apparently.
I'm not, I'm using, utilizing the code.
If they give more than that, they're fine.
More than what?
Than 10 feet, 10 by 10 space. If he, he's giving a lot more open space than is required by code.
Well, if you have, if you have, if you have, the code says that no dimension shall be less than 10 feet.
Okay.
So, so by that logic, if he has a 3-foot, 3-foot on one side, and, and 60 feet down the wall, okay, that's 180 feet, so that's 180, you're fine with that.
No, that's, you're reading it wrong, Art.
I'm reading it, I'm reading it exactly as it reads.
The code says 100 square feet of open space.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you to the applicable code, which is condominium. I just gave it to you.
I'm familiar with the code, thank you.
Well, then you want to go to it? Want to read it to me?
Sure.
17.34.060, A10. Private, private open space. An adjoining private open space shall be provided for each condominium unit, okay? With, with no dimension less than 10 feet.
That's 100 square feet with no dimension less than 10 feet, which means you have to have at least...
Excuse me. I will finish.
No, it says 100 square feet with no dimension, minimum 100 square feet with no dimension less than 10 feet, which means a 10 by 10 area.
Yeah.
We are providing more than 100 square feet with at least 10 by 10 of open space.
Can you direct me, then, to the code by number that says that the private open space is to be 100 square feet with no dimension less than 10?
Can it be more than 100 square feet?
Can you take me to the code that said, that said just what you said?
It's, it's in the table.
I'm sorry, the table is, what table?
Should I have to have the code here in front of me, Art, so I can regurgitate the code?
I'd be advisable.
Really? Okay.
You're relying on the staff report, then...
No, I've done this many times. This isn't...
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's what...
Tom, you know what that, where that table is?
It was a little bit...
Right.
Yeah, that's, no, I, I agree, yeah.
If we're worried because...
This is, he's saying that because this dimension would be here.
I'm reading out of the code.
We're not doing it, condominiums.
This is an error.
No, no, no. Just the end of the...
It's not, it's not, he's, it's not in here. City attorney.
You need to take the widest space, the widest portion.
It doesn't exist.
Art, I'm trying to get a little clarification with, with respect to this dimension. If, if, if what he said, this being the 28 feet, and he gave us this dimension here...
No, no, that's, I thought the same thing. He's worried about this patio being 10 by 10.
Yeah, I understand. No, I, I got that.
On the record, please, all questions through the chair. Let's respect the proceedings of the meeting and act accordingly.
I am confused on what Art is saying. I need help. I'm sorry, Art, I'm confused.
Can you direct your question through the chair, and the chair will go back to Art.
Sure.
So, yeah, Art, can, so, yeah, can you explain with respect to the, the open space?
Yes, okay, so...
Maybe you should do the big one over here, so that...
So, so with, you have your, let's first start with the code.
Okay.
I got, I got the code.
You got the code.
Yeah.
The code says...
I'm clear.
No dimension less than 10 feet.
Where are you seeing a dimension less than 10 feet on this open space?
Steve, move.
Okay, just...
Gentlemen.
I don't know how to use the pointer. Okay, so, I can't even see that far. How do you point this thing?
You can get up, Art, and go.
All right. May I leave the dais down there?
Yes, please. Hang on one second. Please.
Art, try to...
Can you hold on, hold on for just a second?
All right. The dimension I'm talking about is the dimension from trash enclosure to property line.
Right?
The dimension I'm talking about is from the bottom of the trash enclosure to the property line. It's not, it's not dimensioned on the plans, okay? However, if you put a scale to it, I have one on the desk there, it will measure exactly 10 feet, which is okay. However, you have the trash enclosure here, again, not dimensioned, and so it is supposed to be 5 by 8 inside dimension. You've got 6-inch blocks all the way around, so 6, so that adds 1 foot...
Right.
...to the overall dimension. It's a 4 by 8, it's 4 by 8, I don't have, it's either 4 by 8...
5 by 8.
5 by 8, interior dimension. So now, so the exterior dimension has to be 6 by 9.
Correct.
So, since this dimension right now is 5 feet, you need to add another foot.
Which makes it under 10.
Which makes this under 10.
Gotcha. Okay.
All of this is important, because from my perspective, you're squeezing in here 5 minutes, and every inch counts, all right? When you go to the distance across here to here, again, the code says, every dimension, there should be no dimension less than 10 feet. This dimension here, going from the building to the trash enclosure, is a dimension of the private open space. That distance, and also the distance across over here, is part of the open space. We don't know what this bump out is on either side.
2 foot 6, it's on the other drawing.
It's 2 foot 6, so that is 5 feet. So the 28 feet is reduced by 5 feet, so this distance from here to here is 23 feet. It's 23 feet. So you need 10 feet on this one, and 10 feet on this one.
No, you...
Well, that leaves you 3 feet for your closure.
No, Art, you need 10 feet in the other area.
From here to that line. So from there to there is 10 feet. From the back of this to the property line is 10 feet. So that is our legal 10 by 10 space.
Except, except...
This here is bonus space. If you want, we can put a dotted line there and not call this open, private open space.
Okay.
If people are still going to use the private open space, that's why the number...
And then, and then, and then, and then when you go down and you increase this trash enclosure to the proper distance...
We're not putting block on this side, so we'll roll the, the closure out. So we only need 5 plus the 6 inches.
That's 5 and 1/2. You need another 6 inches, this is 10 feet, so now you're, you're at 9 6.
When you do the dimension from the driveway edge, this distance, and the 5, put the 5 in there, you get 10 and 1/2 feet to the property line, to the back of the block wall. So you need to be...
So, you need to be dead as the block on the front, but still have ten feet. I can also even move the garage door over an inch to make it ten foot, one inch, to make it happen. Well, again, all of this, I guess, is because we don't have fully dimensioned plans, okay? So, we have that. While I'm here, okay, I have another question, either of staff. Our code requires a twelve-foot driveway, correct?
Yes.
Okay, our code also requires curbing along here of two and a half feet against each block wall, and two and a half feet on the side of the building, is that correct?
No.
I'm asking staff, is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Really?
It's, uh-
Or-
At homes and stuff like that, you don't see curbs at the, on the side of a house like that.
Okay, so I'll go back and I'll cite the code in just a second when I get back to my, when I get back to, to the dais. Code says, in the R three zone, along a block wall and along the face of the buildings, along the structures, there's to be a two and a half foot curb here and here. Two and a half feet, two and a half feet is five feet. Your dimension here is thirteen feet, and so if you take, you put in the five, you put in the, the, you reduce the thirteen feet by five feet, that leaves eight feet for the driveway.
Right, right.
And the driveway needs to be twelve. And that, by the way, goes all the way down the line. All the way down the line. Including into the, including into this parking space here-
Right.
-that is purporting to be ten feet, and with a two and a half foot curb in here, the space now becomes seven and a half feet. Which doesn't meet the objective.
Yeah, where, where's that two and a half feet in the code, Art?
Could I address the trash can then while you're looking that up?
Yes.
Okay, real quick for the applicant, just to help me out, on that ten foot to the trash can, that is ten foot from the back of that brick wall to the other brick wall, am I correct on your measurement?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're worried about a block wall and on the inside. Personally, if we have to move that, if the staff feels like it needs to be moved out a few inches into the driveway area, I think that ought to resolve it. I think that our open space in both of these, from what I can see, is acceptable, he's gone beyond by having some in the back of the homes as well, and you've got a ten by ten area, at least on both sides. To me, a few inches on a trash reciprocal shouldn't impede this plan on the, the open space that he has, I think we're acceptable. If we go a few inches into their backyard, we go a few inches into their backyard, whatever comes out looks acceptable, that's acceptable with the staff here, I'm good with it, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't want to quorum over just a few inches.
Okay, I'll give you now the, the code for the, it's under seventeen point two, six point zero eight zero Development Standards for Parking, section F five.
Point zero what?
Zero eight zero. Two six.
Got it.
What section, Art?
F five. Curbs shall be installed at a minimum of two and one half feet from the face of buildings, walls, fences, and other structures. This requirement does not apply to driveways that are not part of the maneuvering area for parking, provided that a curb shall be installed a minimum of three feet from the edge of driveways that parallel, that are parallel to block walls, fences, or structures. So, you're going to either be two and a half feet or you're going to be three feet, probably would suggest two and a half feet.
How do we define curbs?
Well-
Because I'm thinking of a curb in the front yard and not going down a wall between homes that were using driveways in there.
We can refer to the code.
So, I guess I just got confused on other properties we have in our town that do not have curbs under the same type of multiple uses on their property, we're not using curbs against block walls, nor are we using them against the building.
Yes, we are, it's right down in Chester.
Not, not how I look as a curb.
I mean, in my neighborhood, there's all kinds of people who extended their driveway all the way to the wall in between the houses.
Mm-hmm, we have planter, is what, is, I've seen a small planter with most of them, so I want to make sure I'm understanding how you're, and, and I'm just making sure I'm grasping why we have such a big curb.
What's the purpose of that two and a half feet, do you think, Art? For that curb, what is the purpose of that?
And this is applying to the R three multiple family zoning districts, okay? Okay, so we're not talking about the R one, we're not talking about your homes, we're talking about the R three multiple family zoning districts, and we're talking about the development standards for parking, and they call for curbs to be installed at a minimum of two and one half feet from the face of the buildings, walls, fences, and other structures.
So, that would mean that even where we have a parking space on the other end, would have to have a curb in there.
Exactly, and if you want to follow it, it has to be on the south, as you go on, parallel to the alley as well, there should be a two and a half foot curb along that wall, which then reduces this parking space that's parallel to the alley from ten feet to seven and a half feet, okay? And, and-
Curbs to me are against the streets.
Wendy?
I know.
With all due respect, with all due respect, we are here to apply the code-
I understand that, I'm just trying to understand how you interpreted it.
I, I guess we can ask the attorney, we can ask the attorney, what, what does curbs, when it says shall be? How permissive is shall be installed? We can ask the city attorney for that.
Well, I take that to mean where a curb is required, it shall be installed, but I'm not, there is no definition in the code of what a curb is, so I would look to staff-
It does say what shall means, shall means must.
But, is the curb required in this instance?
I've seen lots of people do no curbs and just done the planters. Well, what does our code say? So, we're going to ignore our code, I guess?
No, I want to make sure that I'm grasping, and I guess a curb has multiple-
And I guess, I guess I would, here's how I would reply to this.
Because they have this as landscape, so I guess I would make sure.
Well, you can have a curb there, you could have landscaping in the center of it, you have a landscape requirement, we, we have curbs around in other areas, okay? You have your, you have a concrete border and you have the, you have the landscaping within that. If you want to make it a solid curb with no landscaping, I, I would think that if you have to meet a landscape requirement and you're utilizing, you know, you could utilize that to meet, meet that, and I'm probably, in our landscaping, there's probably going to be requirements for landscaping in the parking area, okay? And I don't know how you do that without building up a curb and creating a, a area to, to do the plantings.
So, let me make sure, let me make sure I'm clear with what you're saying, because based on the drawing they currently have, they've got landscaping along that side, you're saying, based on what the code is stating, that it has to either be, well, at least a two and a half foot curb and then landscaping beyond that?
You'd have a curb, two and a half feet, there has to be two and a half feet, two and a half feet, what you put in that two and a half feet, you have to have a curb along the edge, if you, if you want to take part of that and have landscaping between the curb and the wall, if you've got enough to do a planting, you do a planting, but you have to have a curb, and that, I think, obviously has to protect the wall to protect the building.
It's in general, that thirty inches, that two and a half feet, in every other city, in any other parking design, is a curb stop, so car, parking into, next to a building or a wall doesn't slam into the-
Exactly.
All it is is a curb, it's not meant to go parallel, and you're applying it-
I'm reading it.
Let me finish, you're applying it as going parallel, and a car, it's not a problem, that, that thirty inches is simply to stop cars from banging into the building, it's not for parallel, and the, it's written as a double negative. I'm not an attorney, there's an attorney here, it's not-
Mr. Chair, may I help out?
Yes, please.
We're gonna-
If I could offer some conclusion to this, seventeen point two six oh, point oh six oh is the residential section of the parking dimensions. It begins and ends there. Seventeen point two six oh, oh six oh is titled-
Where's the-
Residential permit parking, I'm sorry, residential parking and storage standards. Then you get to the next section, it's oh seven oh, it changes, you're looking at a section that's not intended to be applied to residential parking.
That makes sense.
Well, excuse me.
What section again, Steve?
Look at, above, Art, is that point oh eight oh, point oh eight oh, if you look at a point oh six oh, seventeen point two six oh six oh-
Wait a minute, how did I get to that?
That is the subsection of the code entitled Residential Parking Storage Standards. And below that, the section changes, it goes into ADA parking, then it goes into Development Standards for Parking, not residential development standards for parking, it has examples of commercial parking.
Yeah, let's see.
Staff does not use commercial parking standards for residential review.
Okay, here we, I'm sorry. Two eight oh.
Even have seven oh, seven oh skips in there. Now, I'm missing, yeah.
Thirty five, eighty five.
Yes, we, minor label, totally different, because-
I don't understand what you're saying.
Seventeen, right? Look, here's seventeen two six oh six oh, here's this, oh six oh, and then it goes-
Oh, yours is different.
Oh, here's us. That's the eighty eight, okay. It's different, though. Okay, it's, it's there.
Can I ask you a different question? Because-
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I know the other two that we approved-
That's what I was gonna ask.
-last month have both been pulled by the city council.
Correct.
And we don't know why, I called Steve today and asked him if we knew why, and he said no, so I'm wondering if this, I mean, we could sit here and debate till midnight, but if it's going to get pulled, I, I'm assuming if those other two that we approved got pulled, this one's also going to get pulled, so I'm wondering if we continue it to the next one, because it'll be at the city council meeting in a couple weeks.
June nineteenth?
There's some merit to that for the simple fact that whatever we decide to go through at this point, it would probably be helpful to know if there is a similarity between all three that need to be addressed at the same, at the same time. So, actually, I, I think that's actually a, a pretty valid point, pardon me?
I'd like to, I'd not, I'd like to not do that, I'd like to call for the vote on this project. I, I believe that all these tactics are, are merely delay tactics by somebody out there in the cloud.
Okay, well, let me, let me, let me stop you right there for just, hang on, Art, hold on for one second, let me, let me stop you right there for one second, so, that's an opinion, that's great, but our, our job is, as Art stated, is to make sure that it meets code, so, we can do that, I don't know that you'll ultimately like the result, my, my point is, is that if the council, which is, I, I just found out about this right now, but if the council polled those two, because one of the questions I was going to ask next was, I, I watched the video, there was no discussion about the curb on, on those two, and they're very similar in design and, and in property space, so-
Exactly.
Anyway, but now that we know what we know, that's fine. However, the fact that they've now been polled by council tells me that there's another reason for that, and since they are so similar in nature, it would make sense to continue it just to handle anything that they may come up with on those two that may be part of this as well, and we can address it at that, at that time.
It's not commercial.
That, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying about this, it's not a tactic of any, any kind for, for delay, but it's to be smart about it.
I, I understand your point, my problem is that we come in, we came into this meeting tonight after the continuance, and new things were brought up because we were continued, we're going to be going into the council meeting, uh, June nineteenth, with no idea what, uh, what issues we have to respond to, we have to stand here on the spot and try to respond to these issues, like Mr. DeBolt is pulling out codes, and I look like a fool trying to shuffle through the code and find pertinent sections of the code. It seems only fair that if the council and/or the planning commission is prepared with issues and questions, they ought to be run through staff to be run back to me, so we can decide and figure these things out before we get in front of a, a public forum. We, we've always been very responsive, responsible with, working with staff over the counter over and over and over again, we always, on our designs, always try to meet the code to the letter, try to do a nice project, try to give more to homeowners, having more open space, more storage, bigger garages, laundry rooms, we go to the nth degree to make nice projects for the city, and working with staff has been very fruitful for, for us, obviously, we love the city, and, and for the city too, built some nice projects, gotten rid of blight, so, I want to be able to be prepared if I'm going into the city council meeting, and I feel that we're going to go into the council meeting and be hit with, for lack of a better way to say it, unknowns and issues that we're not able to address, um, without being prepared. Given that we won't be prepared to address the unknown issues, it's going to get continued again, and again.
Really, it doesn't matter, we don't know what's going to happen with the city council, if anything, I think you would want to take this project because of the similarities, and either approve it or deny it, based on what you know tonight, and if you approve it, it now will be on the same status as those other three, and you could look at all three as a whole, instead of this one separately, there's really no reason to try to anticipate what the city council is going to address on any of these projects.
Okay, okay.
Project on its merit, make a decision tonight.
Okay, thank you, uh, wait, couple of comments, I think, did you have a comment?
Well, I was going to say, if the commission did want to continue tonight's item to see what the council addresses, and I, I understand what you're saying, maybe you can address it here at the planning commission and save the appeal, but you should put out all your issues tonight.
That's correct.
Right.
So that they can come back at the next meeting-
Absolutely.
-with everything addressed, so new issues will not be raised at the-
At that time, I, I agree, yes, thank you. Did, did you have something else, or do you know? Uh, hang on, wait one second, one thing, Art?
I have two other issues, one-
Oh, wait, but before we get into that really quick, let me just-
Do we know who requested the appeal and what it was regarding?
Council member Warren Kusamoto had requested, and we do know not, we do not know the subject matter.
It was called for review, not an appeal.
An appeal has to have reasoning behind it in the application, a call for view is pretty neutral, we find out the night of the hearing.
Which will be the night of the council meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, the hearing is held during a council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a publicly noticed hearing, just like yours are. The same parties living five hundred feet or owning five hundred feet within the parcel have been invited, it's been in the newspaper, the mailing goes out this week, ten days prior to the hearing, and it's much of the same, so we will, we will provide the city council with a very neutral staff report, because we don't know what topics to address.
Okay.
So, it'll be much like a staff, it'll be a couple-page cover sheet with your staff reports and resolutions attached to it, because again, we can't react to anything, we don't know.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, two other questions, one has to do with the one parking space next to unit two, which is halfway covered, correct?
Oh, like a carport?
You mean, unit one?
I'm sorry, unit one, yeah, it'd be parking space one- I'm sorry, unit one. Yeah. It'd be parking space one. That is not a covered parking space.
It's a carport.
And how far does the roof of the carport go? It's just the building, correct?
Just the building.
It's five feet.
It's five feet open to the sky.
Five feet open to the sky. So if it's gonna be a covered parking space, it should be covered in, in its entirety. And the condominium code requires that that the CCNRs shall contain a specific assignment of two covered spaces for each unit. And that open, that open to the sky is not the covered space that meets the requirement of the code. It has to, space has to be ten feet.
The code requires one covered space per unit, one enclosed space per unit. The other space can be an open or carport parking space.
Okay, that's, that's the R three code. You're doing, you're not building an apartment. You're building a condominium.
With respect, sir, this is an R three.
I'll finish my sentence. And if you go to the, the condominium code that was mentioned before, code section. Code section one seventeen point three four point zero six zero. The covenants, conditions, and restrictions shall provide for provisions stating that each individual unit owner is entitled to two specific covered parking spaces. So four of the five have two. Unit number one has one covered and one uncovered.
Art, what section was that again?
Seventeen point three four point zero six zero. B. It'll be B four.
They're good. They're good. Where's the partial? Oh, they're on the other drawing. Okay, okay. I know, I can't, that's why I didn't even open.
So, so you're.
So it's, it's five feet at the moment, and you're, you're saying according?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a fully, it's not a, it's not a covered space.
It's, it's five, five feet.
Five feet.
Versus twenty. Well.
Ten feet.
Ten, okay.
Do you allow projections into the side yard? Okay, so you could cover that another thirty inches. You could cover it five foot, the building covers it, and you could cover it another two foot six inches. So you could cover that car. And any car, an average-sized car, full-sized car, is about definitely less than seven feet. A suburban is less than seven.
Well, again, we have to look to the code. The, the definition of a parking space is how, is covered space is ten feet wide.
But the car is covered. The parking space is covered. There is extra space outside the parking spaces that's, that's used for egress, getting in and out of the car. But the space will be covered. Virtually covered.
So it'd be kinda like a compact space?
No. A full-size suburban is seven foot wide. Not too many people driving. Your average car is less than six feet wide. So you have about two feet on each side. You're virtually covering the car. It's possible, if that was your concern.
The concern is the compliance with the code, which requires two covered spaces.
The definition.
And the definition of a, of a covered space is ten feet. By twenty?
Okay. At seventeen twenty-six oh sixty, it says R three multiple family zoning districts. In R three multiple family zoning districts, one of the required parking spaces for each dwelling unit shall be located in an enclosed garage. Carports are encouraged for additional spaces for dwelling units. Doesn't say it has to be covered.
For an apartment.
What's that?
That's for an apartment.
No, it's for R three.
Well, what, then we have, I guess we have a conflicting code then.
You have a lot of conflicting code.
And so I will guess I will ask the city attorney when we have a conflicting code, under the rules of interpretation, what do we do with two conflicting codes?
Art, what was the other number?
All right.
What was the other number, the one that you were saying?
Seventeen point three four point zero six zero.
Which number?
B four.
Number four.
B one.
B four.
B four.
What, what was the other section?
Well, it's rules of interpretation.
The other one seventeen dot two six dot oh six.
That one I had.
Oh.
Right. This is a condominium. It's not an apartment. Right.
Well, it's, the R three is not meant to be apartment standards. It's multi-family.
Multi, okay.
Standards. But there are more specific provisions for condominiums. I, I said this on the way in when I came onboard here. I'll be saying it on the way out. This code's a mess. I think that's why we're out for a RFP, Steve.
Yep.
To, to fix our zoning code. In this case, I'd look to what the long-time interpretation has been of the, the planning department where we've had evidently inconsistent code provisions. How has this been applied in the past?
Well, we'd have to honestly go look at previous ones, see what practice has been employed by both the commission and the staff.
Generally, the more specific would prevail, and the condominium is the more specific and.
And the more restrictive.
I. So along those lines, the standard for a covered parking space comes from the R three standard. Right, so you're, you're choosing an R three standard for part of the definition and the condominium standard for another part of the standard. So they don't talk about what makes a covered parking space in the condominium section. You have to go to the R three section, and the R three section is, is what I think the applicant is referring to in regards to the parking standards.
Well, you have, you have to have a, a covered space. You have to go look at the parking matrix that where it lays out what a, what a, what a covered space, what's, what's the dimensions for a covered space?
Well, you have an R three.
That dimension comes from the seventeen dot two six dot oh six oh.
Yeah.
Which also says R three multiple family zoning districts. So that's just a zone, that's a zone.
Right, and this is.
And this is a condominium project within that zone.
Within that zone.
So.
I believe that, I mean, you have to determine the definition of covered.
Yeah.
If you cover eighty feet of it, is that?
Well, I, I think it's clear that covered is, is ten foot. To me, that it's, it's, do you need one, one enclosed space and one not enclosed space? Or do you, or are you okay the way that it is? I mean, one is the condominium standard, one's the R three standard.
Condominiums, these are condominiums, and the city attorney is going to have to pass on that, 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 that number four is a mandatory item inside the CCNRs. That has to be in there, that each resident shall have two covered, designated two covered parking spaces. That's mandatory language for the CCNRs. You can't change that. Okay, and so, so.
Right, so right now in the R three, it says it has to have, has to be covered. The, the code under the condominium is more specific within that code. So.
Right.
You have, you have your R three, and then you have this prevailing code above that that says now when it's this, it's gotta be.
R three doesn't have to be covered.
R three does not have.
No, just, right.
Does not have.
So if it were apartments, it wouldn't have to. The idea is if you're building homes, you've got a higher standard.
If we're not a condominium.
Correct.
This would be fine.
Right.
But since this is, and keep in mind, these are gonna be individually sold, so the people buying them need to know what they're getting, and we have mandatory language that is required to be in the CCNRs, which we don't have, which should have been provided also with this, but that's a different, another issue. But so the condominium code requires two covered spaces to be designated in the CCNRs. They can't do that. Therefore, they can't fulfill that aspect of the code. Now, I'm gonna say in totality, just in totality, the problem we're having is, is that while mathematically on the first cut, this property qualifies as a five-unit parcel mathematically on the first cut. You're allowed to do the five units, provided you can comply with all the other development standards that apply to the property. And as you can see, it's difficult. In fact, it's impossible when it comes to this space here. I still have, believe that the, the curbing is correct, uh, that there's to be curbing, protecting the wall and protecting the building. Okay, and I'm sure if we go check other projects, I'm sure that curbing is in there. And, and, and in most projects, if not all projects that have been recently built out and approved. And the reason we're having the problem, this probably should be scaled back to four units, and then there would be enough room to to meet the, meet the development standards. The problem is that you're too big, too much for, too much for what we have.
So. I'll say, I, I disagree with you on the private open space and the curbing. I think that your interpretation of the, the code on that isn't correct. I'm, I'm inclined to go with what Mr. Mendoza pointed out. The covered parking, though? That's. I, I think I have to go with you on that one. So, and that alone is enough to create a significant problem for the project.
Well, again, what's the definition of covered?
It, that, that's covered. It's.
Ten feet.
Ten foot by twenty foot.
A carport is nine feet wide. If we wanna be precise. Nine by nineteen is a carport.
If it was that, you couldn't meet that anyways.
Well, I, I disagree with your interpretation, with the interpretation of the code in terms of the, the required two covered parking spaces per unit.
Well, to me, that's the clearest part, right here under the condominium section.
If you had a condominium in the R two zone, what are the, what are the requirements for covering it there?
These are standards for condominiums.
I understand that, I understand the condo, but you look through the R three, you need one covered, one other parking spot. In R two, do you need two covered as a one and one? Do you know?
If it's a condominium?
If it's a condominium in R two, what does R two say? You're gonna tell me it has to meet condo also. That's an additional requirement.
Correct.
I understand.
Right.
R three says one covered, one not covered. What does R two zone say?
I would think it would be the same because the condo part would.
Prevail.
Prevail.
Prevail, right.
If it was an apartment, put it that way, in the R two zone.
It's a different conversation.
It's a different, that's why I'm asking.
Well, what, how is that pertinent? Yeah, I don't know how that's pertinent to this conversation.
I think it gives you information as to what's.
We, we're very clear with, we, we're very clear with, with the direction that you're taking this. The issue at hand is, is that the struggle here is what is written in the code. Right, wrong, or indifferent. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. Nobody's sitting here placing judgment on the code. All we're saying is, we're here to uphold the code, and what is being presented currently does not meet. That's, that's, that, that's the nuts and bolts of the, of the whole thing.
Well, not, not true, because you also have the responsibility to keep following certain precedents that planning has done, decisions, interpretations they've made over the years. You can't ignore that. So it's not just what you decide tonight. There's a buildup of law and precedent that's happened over years. You can't, you can't look at every project as an island in a bay. You have to respect the prior decisions.
No, we look at every project according to the code. That's what we do.
But you apply the code just like they apply the code on previous projects.
Ox, you wanted to get through all the issues that we have so you can table these later, so this before also. So I think we've exhausted the covered parking one, and maybe we should.
I just have a question about the.
About all the other issues, so you have an idea what are concerned.
Definitely. I would like to ask a question to staff about the covered parking. Uh, there was a recommendation by them that, that the, the space right now is at nine feet, I believe, that, that, that carport. What is that at? What is the?
Ron, do you know the width of that?
The width on that carport?
It's not dimension.
Might not be. I don't know.
And it's not.
Well, you have to look at the plan.
It's not scaled.
Figure it out.
So that's my first part of the question. The other part of the question was, you said that there's another thirty inches that the roof could be extended from the five feet. Who's that?
Into the five-foot setback.
I believe that's architectural features. I don't believe that's.
Pardon me?
Go into projections into setback. I don't think you can, I don't think you can take the whole building in there, can you?
I don't know.
Well, no, 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 you wouldn't.
I don't know if I would make that interpretation, that a carport could go thirty inches into setback. I'd have to stare at that for a bit.
That's longer than I'd have to.
I, you know, railings, steps, I get it. But a carport.
No, the roof, the roof.
What about an awning?
I, I'm.
You know, it's great that we keep discussing every minutia of this project. I really do appreciate that, but they still don't meet front setbacks. And. Front setbacks.
Well, we'll get to that.
Well, we will, but you know this drawing will change because of that factor.
Okay, so let's.
So why dive deeper into this minutia?
So let's, let's move on.
Yeah, please.
So there's, there's an issue that we have here at hand with, with, with the space according to the code that, that we're bringing to your attention of the covered, covered space according to the code on, on that.
Correct.
Okay, so let's, let's, yeah.
Next issue.
Next issue.
Well, you know, I'm surprised that these plans came to us without any changes, without any amendments. And I, as you know, I voted no against the other two projects of similar floor plans, and my, my concern was with the rooms that are designated to be used as study. And I'll go back. Just for the record, the record's pretty clear on the last project. I refer you to code section seventeen point two six point zero four zero. And this basically, if you look at the, the graph on page four sixteen, but on the R three multiple family, basically two spaces for each dwelling unit, for rooms that can be readily utilized as bedrooms, in parentheses, i.e. bedrooms, dens, offices, close parentheses, comma, and additional half-space for each room in excess of the first two bedrooms. So that half-space parking has not been provided here. The code is quite clear that these bed, that these rooms that are designated for study meet this, and therefore you're required to do another half of parking space. There's some discussion about what a bedroom is. There's no definition. Go to a clear definition from Webster's, absent definition, that's what you go to, it basically says that area that is, that can, you can, can be used for sleeping. There's some discussion at the last meeting about some of the commissioners said that they didn't think that was relevant because they wouldn't climb two steps to use the bathroom. Frankly, it doesn't matter what they think. It matters what the code says. And so for that reason, I don't think this project, or the other project frankly, comply with that particular section.
Uh, the piece of paper I just handed out.
Okay.
Is a revision to that room. It's now a laundry mudroom.
For which unit?
Unit two. Well, I'm assuming-
That's the only one that has that room downstairs.
Okay.
I like that. I want that.
Hmm. Yeah. I like that.
Dump all your stuff downstairs.
No, no problem.
No problem.
Easy. And we would propose the same change on the other two projects.
Thank you.
And, next issue?
One last one before, and that has to do with turning radius. I asked for, I asked staff in an email to provide us with a handout as to how turning, a twenty-eight-foot turning radius is determined, including the location of a pivot point for each vehicle, you know, on site.
Big compass.
So, I guess, and the reason for that is, for unit two, space number four, uh, the, it would appear to me that the turning radius, well, I don't see it, if, if, if the arc of that, that we have there, if that's the turning radius, I'd like to see how that, I'd like to see, that requires the vehicle to back out of their space, going the opposite direction of the, of where they want to go. And, I'm, I've done a little, I've done, I, I, it would, it would appear to me that, that the arc should be going the other direction, so that you would back out, and then you would be able to make the turn, make one turn and go to the exit. So you're making, making basically a two-point turn. Uh- We have it right here.
Pass it down.
That's a revision with a little, with another couple feet of room.
No, I'm sorry.
Still not share?
I don't like sharing it all.
See, that works. You won't have me back.
That works if you want to back out of, if you want to back completely out of your garage, and what, keeping in mind that your exit is, is to the left. Your, it would appear to me that this, you would either, you know, the code requires a twenty-eight-foot turning radius and twenty-four feet clear in the back. It, it, the, the, I did a little looking up as to what is a turning radius, and the, it would appear that this is going in the opposite direction.
So you're precluding drivers from having to make a two- or three-point turn to get out of their driveway?
Exactly. They should be making about a two-point, a two-point, they should be able to back straight, go straight back, make a left-hand turn, and, and go ahead and pull out.
What is, I, do you have a, a, a code section that defines that?
Yeah, it, it does say that. It doesn't say a two-point turn, it says a twenty-eight-foot turning radius, and then twenty-four feet clear for a ninety, for a ninety-degree, a ninety-degree space, which is, which is what this is.
That's in, that's in the commercial zone, the twenty-four feet. I'd be happy to make the twenty-four-foot straight-back requirement. I could redesign the project, and it might be able to get, might even be able to get an extra unit in there.
Well, let me-
Or certainly an extra bedroom.
Let me find the, find the code.
Shouldn't that be thirty to that? Or am I missing something? If this is a revision, and they add it to be, it should, oh wait, yeah, it should be thirty.
Two foot is here, so-
Yep.
Well, it refers us to-
Isn't that thirty?
It was twenty-eight, okay, so, now it's revised.
Wait, wasn't that thirty?
I don't know. Oh, well, they, they brought it down here, for some reason.
If, isn't your revised thirty foot? I'm missing something. They both say twenty-eight.
Well, the shape of the curve follows a twenty-eight-foot radius, but you're, you're right, you do have an extra two feet, but the curve of the radius is twenty-eight feet.
Okay.
But it has moved over two feet.
There you go.
Cut that one, too, if you want it to.
At some point, you, at some point, you're gonna meet up with this, this line, as it comes in.
Come in like this.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah.
And you can be back in.
Hmm.
But you think-
Then you lose your, some of your private open space.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you could, well, no, you can't. Oh, you can.
No, you can.
Yeah, here's your, here's your tenderness lane here. So you technically could.
I don't have the code section, uh, seventeen point-
I don't want to move this one.
Six.
No.
You're gonna lose that height, right?
Searching their turning radius.
Radius seventeen point two six point zero six zero. Seventeen point two six point zero six zero.
Yeah, okay, so F.
And then you go to, F is a section under number three. Three says front setback area and driveways.
Right, I have it.
And F is a subsection of that.
And it says here, a minimum turning radius of twenty-eight feet shall be required for garages. A minimum backup distance of twenty-four feet is required behind all ninety-degree parking stalls. So, I would say that to, to accomplish, I will say, a normal egress from your garage and going to the driveway area where you're gonna exit the property, you either have, you either provide a, a turning radius that allows you to do that, okay, and, or, and then have a minimum backup distance of twenty-four feet behind a ninety-degree stall. So this is a ninety-degree space or stall coming out of that garage. This curve that he's showing does not allow you, a person pulls in, fine, they can pull in, but when they go to back out, you're gonna have to back all the way out, and you're pointed the wrong direction, and you're gonna have to make a, somehow make a U-turn inside the, inside this twenty-eight feet to exit the, to exit. You either, you either go straight back, twenty-four feet, 'cause you're along a wall, obviously, you can't, you can't turn into the, you know, in my opinion, this turning radius is, is, is the exact opposite of what it should be, exact opposite of what, and I'm, I'm gonna defer to staff on that. You should know that. You should know whether this is, is this the proper arc for this turning radius for this, for this parking space?
I'll bring the traffic engineer to help address that question for you, sir.
Your planner doesn't know this? Are you the planner? Who's the planner? Do we have a planner in?
Well, a planner is not a civil engineer. I'll bring a civil engineer for you, sir, so they can address your questions about parking radius.
That's, that's the question there, and that's fine, uh, 'cause we need an answer to it. Or then a minimum, or a minimum backup distance of twenty-four feet for a, that's the minimum, we could make it twenty-eight feet, they have twenty-eight feet here, and then backs, you could back straight, and then you can make a left turn out and go right out to the, to exit the property. I think, I think it's, it's, it's a faulty design with respect to have someone to back out into, to back out into the driveway.
Um, the twenty-four feet behind a parking stall refers to the, to the, the parking stall that's an open parking stall in a commercial or parking lot.
I'm reading in the residential, okay, I, I, I'm reading in the R3 zone, residential, twenty-eight feet with a minimum backup distance of twenty-four for all ninety-degree parking stalls.
Well, we have a twenty-eight-foot backup distance and a twenty-eight-foot radius. There's twenty-eight feet behind that garage.
For space, for space number-
Does it say that the-
For, for, for unit two, space number four, you do not have, you do not have twenty-eight feet, you don't have twenty-four feet, you don't have, you don't have eight feet clear.
The code doesn't say that the, the backup has to be perpendicular.
Maybe let us pick it back, and we'll work on it. Okay, you have a good point.
Yeah, I have a real good point, so-
Let us pick it back and work on it.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the drawing here, is this what you're referring to right here?
That space there.
So, you're saying somebody could not back out like this and go this way?
No.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I'm looking at it, and I'm, okay, I, I, what's that?
Yeah, I don't-
I disagree. I, it looks to me like somebody could easily back out of that and turn left. Do, are you saying because you don't know the distance between this, this wall here and this unit here, right here?
Twenty-eight feet.
He's showing twenty-eight.
You know, you know, you know the distance is twenty-eight feet.
Right.
You have, you have a vehicle that you've pulled in.
Right, into the garage.
You, you've managed to get in.
Right.
You, you would, to go out.
I, I would just, I would just back up, and then-
The code says twenty-four, twenty-four clear.
Right, but he, but he is, he can back out, he can back out twenty-eight, and then he can pull left.
That's straight.
I, I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to get where I-
Yeah, 'cause I agree, the code doesn't say it has to be straight, it just says you need the room, and there's clearly the room, I mean, I personally wouldn't want to park there every day, but I think there's room to do it.
That's fine, that's where, that's where we're at.
I see what Art's point is.
That's where we're at, I'm not gonna beleaguer it, I, I, we, 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 you know, I won't be buying it either, but-
It's up to interpretation at that point, because that's all I'm saying, is that to me, it looks like somebody could back up.
I would like, also, I would like the-
I wouldn't do it either, but I'm just saying.
I would like a clarification on the turning radius, and we don't have to have the engineer here. The handout is fine, that illustrates a, for that, for this space, how you compute the turning radius to enable a person to exit that garage, to exit that garage.
You buy a Fiat.
[laughing]
Well, I mean, and if that requires a city smart car to do it, I, I think that that can be done with the handout, and that can be done with an email, almost, and should have been done prior to this meeting to have it. Staff, we were, I was told this would be handled by staff in this meeting today, so is that, are you prepared?
The traffic engineer was unavailable, sir.
Interesting, okay.
You know, I'd give us an opportunity to go back and work on it.
That's fine.
You wanted to know the issue.
That's the issue, that's one of the issues that's, that's there.
I have a little bit of concern in getting in and out of, of space five and nine. I mean, I don't see how you would do that.
Pull my drawing out again.
Can I make a suggestion, knowing you're looking at it?
Yeah.
And I'm going off the handout you just gave me. On this handout, you've got a great ten-by-ten private open space, then you have a little extra space before you put your curb in, move the curb down to the open space.
That's fine.
And that's gonna shave off some more and give more room for that car to back out.
Right.
And then, I don't know what, you had a comment for the other one.
We'll tweak it, some more.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna lose a little bit of land, but it's not gonna hurt them. How do you get in here?
No, how would you get, you have to make that turn, that's almost-
Don't get me. Well, you're not gonna do it in one shot, you know?
All right. With that, that's all I have.
Yeah, but it fits the, it matches code.
Space five and six, Victor's, what you're, you're talking about?
If you physically go over to one of these properties, and try to, you visualize, trying to make that turn.
But it meets code.
It's a, it's a two-point or three-point turn.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you're gonna have to do this, back out to this way, and back in, that's, that's the only way.
Yeah, right.
The, the, the prob, you know, no, yeah, but really, the, 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 here's, here's the bigger issue with, with that, finding that, and if it meets code and all, but the more difficult it becomes for somebody to park their car in that garage, the easier it is for them to store a bunch of stuff in the garage and not park, park a car in it at all.
Yeah, but the CCNRs say that you-
Well-
I know.
But that's, that's, that becomes a bigger issue.
Okay, and then, uh, follow it back out.
So I think-
Till we can pipe.
Yeah, so let's probably bring your issue.
What's that?
I'm sure you wanna bring your issue to the, to the discussion.
Well, this, this was an issue brought up by Mr. DeBolt at the last meeting regarding the, uh, the height of the building versus the number of stories, and its proximity to an R1 property. There's, there's a handout, you guys might be one short, 'cause I had eleven and I have two in my hand, so you might be one short.
We're good.
We're, we're good.
So, Steve's in. No, I got it.
So you all have the Google Maps photo showing the radius of a hundred feet?
Sir, could you introduce yourself first?
Steve Stapakas.
Thank you.
I'm the proud son of Olympius Stapakas. So do you have the handout, we're all on the same page, looks like this, that shows a radius, Google Maps?
Not yet.
It's just a single, okay.
Please. You're gonna go to the table.
Got it.
Two dash zero three.
Oh, is this, yeah.
So you should have-
He's got a lot of handouts.
No problem.
Thank you, Stephen. Seventeen oh eight oh three. This'll be short and sweet, promise.
Okay, we're, we're talking about height?
Uh, not yet.
Eleven B.
So everybody should have an exhibit that's stapled, that there's three pages-
Yep.
With some color, and then a eight-and-a-half by eleven. So, on the stapled one, you all know that the right-of-way at Farquhar is sixty feet wide, and then in addition, there's another forty-foot drainage ditch, so that's a hundred feet from the property line. Uh, that's the first thing. Second thing is, let's go back to the code and, and be exact on this. For the height requirements in the R3 district, there's a note that says, note number eleven, and you know this, portions of structures in excess of thirty feet shall be set back an additional five feet. Well, the whole building is essentially less than thirty feet, right, Nick? Okay, so no problem on that one. B, portions of structures located within a hundred feet of R1 property shall not exceed two stories and thirty feet in height. That's the one we're up against, right? Okay. So, if you go back to the Google Maps one, the single eight-and-a-half by eleven, and you look at that, if you go to R1 property, and I, the drainage ditch is not R1 property, let's make sure of that, let's go back to the codes and look at the definitions in your municipal code. Under residential property, quoting, residential property means a parcel of real property that is developed and used either in part or in whole for residential purposes. Clearly, a drainage ditch, a storm drain, is not a residential property. It, that's the definition.
Where's your definition?
Where is it?
Yeah, what?
Uh, it's in the, in the code section definitions, in the, in the municipal code, if you look it up there.
Section, it's the very last chapter.
It's just definite.
Oh, I see, it's at the very back.
Definitions, yeah.
So, again-
I think they're alphabetical.
In, they're alphabetical. Residential property, in quotations, means a parcel of real property that is developed and used either in part or in whole for residential purposes. It excludes hotels and motels in that. Let's go further into the code and definitions, where it talks, the very first chapter of definitions is the purpose of the definitions. This chapter provides definitions and phrases used in this zoning code that are technical or special- or specialized, or that may not reflect common usage. If definitions in this chapter conflict with definitions in other provisions of the municipal code, these definitions shall apply for the purposes of this zoning code. So, it specifically says, these terms are exact and precise and pertain exactly to zoning. You can't use the common usage. So we're held and bound by that definition of residential property. There's no reasonable man on that council, or woman, that will say that the storm drain is a residential property. There's no way. So, we can have a surveyor, that, that diagram is to scale, but we can have a surveyor go out and go from the corner of the property of the nearest R1 property and lay out where 100 feet is. And it's going to be, it, it'll be within that front yard setback, that 20-foot front yard setback. So no portion of the building is going to be affected by this 100 feet. Amid all the other problems that you have with the project and all the other concerns and questions, and I, I realize there's a lot, this shouldn't be one of them.
Uh, let's see, it's going to be...
So, it's a diagram.
I can...
It, it's to scale, you know, plus or minus a few feet.
Right in here.
It'll require a survey. We're willing to get a surveyor if it's that important. Regardless, the building's going to be 30 feet, whether it's three stories or two stories.
Do you have any comments on that?
Mm-hmm. All right, I'll, I'll take you to, to the, uh, section, uh, section 17.02.010. This is interpretation of provisions. I'll, I'll, and I think we need to be clear as to what 11B, what 11B says about what the footnote says. It says that portions of structures located within 100 feet of R1-zoned property, we're dealing with property that is zoned R1. Period. Okay? So, in 17.02.10, purpose, this chapter provides rules for resolving the questions about the meaning or the applicability of this zoning code. The provisions of this chapter are intended to ensure the consistent interpretation and application of the requirements of the zoning code and general plan. And so then, I will take you to subsection F, where it says zoning map boundaries. If there is uncertainty about the location of a zoning district boundary shown on the official zoning map, then the following rules are to be used in resolving the uncertainty. One, where the zoning map shows a parcel or area within a particular zoning district, the zoning district shall extend to the center line of an adjacent road, street, parkway, or highway. So, in this instance, the zoning district, this is a property, this, we're talking about an R1 zone, and...
17.02.010.
Okay, the site again is 17.02...
020.
Point 010, well, go to point, point 020.
Oh, point 020.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, okay.
Section F.
F.
Zoning map boundaries. We're after R1-zoned property.
Can we pull up the zoning map?
No.
You had it up there.
The code? No.
No, he has it.
You can Google it or pull it up.
F.
02, 020.
Unit F.
F.
Yeah, F1, actually. Where the zoning map shows a parcel or an area within a zoning district, the zoning district shall extend to the center line of an adjacent road, street, or parkway. So what I would say is, is that you have the center line of Farquhar. What we're dealing with are not uses, we're dealing with the property. Okay? You have, the south half of Farquhar is in the R1 zone. The use of Farquhar is as a roadway, the property is R1-zone property. You have the flood control, you have then the flood control channel, now, I'll give it, that flood control channel is located within the R1 tract that's under there.
It's hard to tell from that map.
So I'll give you, here, I'll give you a handout.
I have it in front of me, thank you.
You have this handout?
I do.
All right, so it's not, it's not clear, it's not unclear. So, so, here, go ahead. So, you have, you have Farquhar from the center line south is in the R1 district. That's the public right-of-way. You then have...
Is this center line or is that on the side of right-of-way? Seems like it's clearly on this side of Farquhar.
I'm not, I'm not looking...
Can't see it?
I'm, I can't see that, to that detail. If you want to look at this, it'll have a little more detail. Um, the, then, if you go with, if you, if you look at the map here, you'll see, it says tract in the upper right, upper left-hand corner, and then under that, you'll see Lot A. Okay? That is a lot inside that, inside that tract. That is also, that is also R1-zone property. The use of the property is as a flood control channel. Okay? The, the footnote simply says that any structure within 100 feet of R1-zone property, that includes half of Farquhar, that includes the flood control channel, you know, that's all within the R1-zone area, and everything, all property within the zone is zoned R1. All property is R1-zone property. And so, it would need to be, anything within 100 feet from the center line north would have to be two stories and 30 feet, or 30 feet, either way.
Why do you keep going to center line?
Because that is the boundary for the R1 district.
No, you're looking at an assessor's parcel map. It's not a city document.
I'm looking, reading the code.
It's from the county assessor.
I'm reading the code.
No, 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 you, the map that you're referring to does not have a zone boundary line.
Right.
But you keep telling us it does. This is the official zoning map for the city. It's not in the center line.
Well...
Clearly.
Well, you have it on your plans, the center line of Farquhar.
That's not, there's no zone boundary line. This is the zone boundary line.
Okay.
It's at the right-of-way.
Let me continue mine. We'll have the discussion. So then, and this applies, this has been consistently applied, with the exception of the building next door, which is a, an aberration, should not, which is, in my opinion, a non-conforming structure at this point, that's the one next door. But if you go down, if you go to the west towards Los Alamitos Boulevard, you have the condominiums on the corner of Los Alamitos Boulevard, I mean, on the corner of Farquhar and Reagan, okay? And if you look at those, all those to the front are all two stories, yet as you get farther back and away, they step up to three stories. If you go to the east, go down Farquhar to the east, the next condo complex that you come to is Pepper Tree, and if, if I remember correctly, when you look at Pepper Tree, you will notice that the first row of condos are all two-story, and they step up to three as they get to the back, towards the Alfa. Okay? This, and that is because they are across the street from the same R1 zone, and the, the ones on Reagan and Farquhar across from Old Dutch Haven, again, R1 zone. We have probably 30 other properties along there that are yet to be developed or more that could be recycled, as it were, along Farquhar, all of which would be within 100 feet of the R1-zone district. That R1-zone district begins at the center line of Farquhar, wherever that is, however that's determined, when you have your engineer go out and survey the property, he can locate center line of Farquhar for them, and from there, they know they have to go back 100 feet before they go up three stories. So...
So, let me, let me ask a question at this point, because there's obviously glaring discrepancy between the interpretation of the code and where the R1 zone starts and where it ends, or where it begins, and so how do we get to a conclusive?
There's a discrepancy.
There's a discrepancy between what you feel the...
No, I'm reading the code.
I, I know. Let me, let me...
Right, but that's...
There's a discrepancy between what you're saying as to where it is measured from versus what they're saying it's measured from, with respect to what they've just handed out, and whether or not the, whether or not the, the drainage ditch is part of the R1 zone or not, based on the definition that he gave us. So his argument is different than yours with respect to measurement. So what I'm trying to find out is, how do we get to...
Well...
The, the facts of this?
Well, I, I will, I will provide you the, I guess we can come up with the, the track map for, for the suburbia tract. The Orange County flood control channel is located within that tract. Each flood control channel has a lot number, in this case, it's lettered, it's Lot A, and the assessor gives it an assessor parcel number, number one. You have that right here. This is your, this, it says tract, at the upper left-hand corner is the tract, the tract number is at the lower right-hand corner, and this is the legal track map, okay? Shown in the legend, right down here, it says track number 5867 at the bottom. Okay? This is the recorded tract, all right? And all tracks have lot numbers, and they have assessor parcel numbers. The lot number for the first residence in the tract is lot number two. Excuse me, is lot number one, but for the, the flood control channel, it's Lot A. Okay? That's within this, that's within the tract. And so the, it's Lot A, and then the first residence is Lot One. The assessor gives it an assessor number of, circle number is one, and the next parcel is assessor parcel two. These are all located within the same tract, which is the residential, it's that residential tract.
So, I, I understand that, but with respect to the definition of the actual property and not being, uh...
Well, it has to be, because the code says that where you have a roadway, where you have a roadway, it, it goes to the center line of the roadway.
Well, let me, let me interject on that. You're reading the section F in 17.02.020?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and, but that section F says if there's uncertainty about the location of a zoning district boundary shown on the official zoning map. Now, I think many of us have looked at the map that's up here, and I don't really see that there's any uncertainty in my mind. It's on this side of Farquhar, that's pretty clear. So any of that other stuff about it extending to the center of the road doesn't apply in my mind, because there is no uncertainty, because the map's clear. I don't know that that helps you guys, because the flood control, uh, channel is in, is in the R1 zone.
Right.
And that, that's where the issue lies. So, but I, I don't, this whole thing about the center of the road and all that is, if there's uncertainty, I don't see the uncertainty, so I don't, I don't know that we need to get into that.
There's zero uncertainty there. I think that's easy. And probably, I mean, you asked the city attorney, that flood control probably should be rezoned, it probably should have been rezoned out of R1, but, you know, every city has 1,000 things that should be rezoned, you can't do it. It, it's too difficult. That's why there's a planning staff and there's a planning commission. Um, I think there's a gray area, whether we're talking about R1-zone property or R1 use and residential use, I, I think there's a gray area there. But beyond all of that, just, just looking at it, what is that, what is that code section, what's that policy for the city really trying to achieve? It's trying to achieve some protection from the R1 uses, the single families, some protection from the R3, right? That's why you have that 100-foot buffer. The, this, that is the spirit. It's like if you walk into any business and you get an answer and the guy, it's a, an answer, and they say, "That's our policy. That's just the way we do it." Well, policies are based on underlying rules and common sense. The common sense is, is that there's an extra 40 feet of flood control there. That is not an R1 use flood, flood control. Clearly, it's not an R, it may be R1 zone, I don't, it shouldn't be, it is, but it's not an R1 use. Why are we trying to protect a flood control from R3 use? It's ridiculous. It's a policy that shouldn't be there. At a minimum, you should consider it, the, the 100 feet from the nearest R1 use. That's at a minimum. Even if you said, "We're going to measure from the flood control, the line in between the flood control and the street," now would we, we'd have to have, uh, two stories in the first 40 feet of the lot, because the, the street is 60-foot wide, it's a 60-foot right-of-way. At worst, we'd have a 20-foot front yard setback and have to have only two stories for the first 20 feet of structure. We would come back to you and ask for a variance. Mr. DeBolt, you talked about properties to the west and properties to the east. There were no flood controls in that issue. There was not an extra 40-foot of buffer. So, this is a unique situation here. It's tailor-made for a variance, no question. Very unique property, in that you have that 40-foot extra buffer for flood control.
My thoughts on that would be, I would say, come back and ask for the variance, because otherwise, we face the same challenge you mentioned earlier, right? We, we let this go by now, and then the next guy comes in here and says, "No, I'm applying the code," and we say, "Well, we made an exception." You know, we, we need to have some way to support that, otherwise, we have to face the fact that now we've got, you know, we've set a precedence. Without a variance, then we don't have a leg to stand on the next time someone comes in and wants to do the same thing.
I agree in part.
And I will simply add to that, that the flood control channel begins behind, right there, uh, on the left, and it continues all the way to Bloomfield. Actually, it continues on, yeah, it continues on, actually, all the way forever, but as far as abutting R1 property, it would end at, uh...
Park.
Where, at Cotton Park. So...
And I think that, that's...
So, it's not, it's not just one property. This is not unique to one property. This will be, and, and we've already dealt with it farther down, and we've dealt with it across, you know, if you go, if you go just to the west, there is no flood control, and the people are set back, and they are two stories within that, within that 100-foot mark from wherever they strike the line, okay? Wherever that's done, and...
It turns. It does turn. If you, if you look at it, it turns.
Yeah.
So, it's 100-foot of buffer in between R1 and R3. It's not 140 feet. 100-foot of buffer, the code, in the spirit of the code says, "Look, we want 100 feet from the structure. We don't need 140 feet." Otherwise, it would have said...
This way, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Park.
Right.
Right. Okay.
I just want to make a comment. I, I agree with everything that's been set up here, there's some very good points made. But to his comment about what the rule's really there for, and, and that, that does, there, there's logic there to me in that. The, the rule is there to keep that hundred-foot buffer from a residence right there. You do have an additional buffer here that is not going to be used for anything other than water running through it. You've got that extra. I mean, more concerning would be the person who actually lives with their fence right behind the, the riverbed. But, but nevertheless, that, that's what the intent is for, and it, it is unique in that regard, because you do have that additional buffer to the house, or the property line, if you will, of an R-run, R1 residence. Different than down the street where you don't actually have that. And it would make sense to actually have that. That's, I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
You know, uh, when we're talking about height of this project, my recollection was that there was another issue, because height is determined from the curb.
The curb.
And this particular lot sits up about thirty, sixty, forty inches above the curb, so.
They were going to.
They would measure the height from the curb, and then it'll automatically gain another three feet, three-plus feet. So that was an issue with regards to the height of this property. In my recollection, I, I don't.
No, I think he mentioned he was going to grade it down to curb level.
Uh, I don't know how you would do that, but, uh.
Take a bunch of dirt.
Yeah. Yeah, but it would cause issues with the, now you're talking about issues on the side, we're already talking about the curbs.
Potentially, yeah. It depends on where, what you've got on the other, on the other sides.
We're getting a better cross-section represented in their plans, would, would help explain that to the commission if it did come to that. So better, I, I think we all admit that there could be better, clearer plans provided to the commission.
I just wanted to give him, we wanted all the issues, and that, that is going to be an issue.
Yeah, we, we agreed at the last meeting that, that we would address it by showing the drawing, starting at the curb level. But, yeah, agreed. In the, in the thumb drive I gave, I gave you, there's a, there's a, I made kind of a little composite of what the building would look like next to, um.
Let me just ask a question, based on what Victor was just saying, with regards to, to going to curb level on that, and how that relates to the structures on each side with where their grade is. How do you make adjustments for that, if you've got the other grades that are actually still sitting higher?
The property to the east, uh, his front yard just slopes up from the sidewalk and comes up.
Okay.
There's no little wall. Property to the west. So here's the property to the, to the west. Do you have this in hand?
Yeah, right.
He's had about a forty, forty-inch wall here.
Okay.
Okay. Give me the remote. So here, here's a picture of this property, it's about forty inches here, three foot four, and on his plans of the building he built, he's thirty-one feet to the peak here.
Mm-hmm.
He's also only a fifteen-foot setback, but his height is about thirty-four foot four roughly, without being surveyed, um, above curb level. Scroll some more.
Which is under the thirty-five, I believe, right?
No, it's only about thirty feet.
Oh, thirty?
And two stories, and that's thirty feet.
Where did I read it, it was thirty-five?
And he's only fifteen feet back, okay? So here's his building again, and I only just threw a terrible rendering next to it, but just to kind of show that this building's going to be on grade. And I attempted to scale these about the same, it's, it's almost impossible, having a picture of the drawing. But this point here is thirty feet above the curb. This point here is thirty-four feet, I think, or something, above the curb, but it's set back an additional five feet. So this meets the, the code as far as height of it.
It was, there was a thirty-five foot, right?
Mr. DeBolt's issue is two-story versus three-story with the R1 zone. So height of the buildings will look exactly the same whether it's two-story or three-story. This building here, that's next door, is three-story, fifteen feet back, um, again, has the same forty-foot buffer, um, of the flood control. Can you scroll some more? Oh, that was it. Go back. So this also shows you, here, stop there. So here's the flood control. This is the, this is the right-of-way, comes to the back of this wall. There's that building we're talking about. That's where our building will go, which will be lower and less massive than that, because we only have one building in the front, and a twenty-eight-foot gap to the next building, and then a building, and then another twenty-eight-foot gap to the next. So in terms of the masking in this building, that's already here, our building will be smaller, less massive, and more articulated, and, and further set back from the, from the right-of-way. What were we talking about?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, you were talking about the, the grade at the side.
Right.
So this guy's wall here, he has about a forty-inch wall. All we have, all we have is building, we're retaining walls, the side next to it.
Right.
It's contributing.
Well, they, they have, that, would that be part, would that wall then be built in part of that space that you have for landscape, uh, on the side, along the side of the driveway? Or would you actually just put that against?
It would be.
I guess it would be against the?
It would be on our, on our property.
Right.
But it'd only be in forty inches high.
Right, I'm just wondering how that affects some of the other dimensions within open space, or? Or driveway, right?
It would still be on top of the wall, the open space. You could have dirt and a wall, and then the P L is going to be, be on the wall. There won't, there won't be a wall to stop you from.
It wouldn't encroach you into the open space.
Yeah, it wouldn't encroach.
I guess, I guess for clarification, I guess this is an issue, since it would be, it would be very nice to see.
You'd have to see plans.
Yeah, it, it would be very nice to see, uh, the grade with the, with the wall and how it relates to.
There's an argument there, we need a better drawing to depict what's going on. But in a lot of cases, all those details are in building plans, not in.
I understand. No, I, I understand.
These are issues that need to be addressed now, so we'll address them more quickly.
I, I suspect if everything met the code with flying colors, then a building plan may not be as necessary, but given that we've got these issues that we've got to deal with, we need to see some, some additional detail that.
And it's helpful to have these issues, so we can address those things and the details correctly.
Correct. Okay. Commissioners, do we have any other issues that need to be addressed?
CCNR? Yes, I would like to have, make sure that we have, uh, copies of the proposed CCNRs as required in Section B. They should have been submitted with the application.
I'd like to get the other commissioners' concurrence on that.
Uh, it's, it's a code requirement.
It is, but it's a code requirement that has been deferred by the commission for over almost forty years. And so the question would remain is, do the planning commissioners want to go line by line through a set of CCNRs? If so, then the, all applicants will be certainly happy to provide the CCNRs early and draw them up early, if that's necessary. But, um, Victor, you've been a commissioner for many years, have you ever reviewed a set of CCNRs?
No.
Okay. Having seven people review a set of CCNRs is problematic, and this isn't what staff wants. This is precedent way before staff was here. That, oh, we know it's a condition, it always has been a condition, and that, I'm sorry, it always has been a code section. We agree that, to that. It's been in our code, it's been in old versions of our code. But the commissions, through conditions, have deferred it to a later date, letting the city attorney review the CCNRs for condominiums. And if that's a change, then you just strike that condition out and say you no longer want to have such a condition, and then we'll have the applicants provide their legal documents to you at an early date, before they ever know that they may even get approval.
Well, I think some of these, some of the things have come up, uh, reviewing this project and some other projects, with Farquhar, and after this hearing, when we get the commissioner's report, I'm going to make some suggestions about some things I think we could do, but that's not relevant to this particular project. But, I don't know, regarding the CCNR issue.
Well, I guess I would just simply say that, uh, this is the first, for me, I believe, this is the first condo project that I've encountered, since I've been on the commission.
You didn't do the ones on Chestnut and Walnut?
Conflicted.
Oh.
I've had conflicts on several.
Were you there for Olson-Salcelito?
I don't think I was.
I was not there.
Okay, Howard, three, seven, two, two, Howard, three, nine, six, one, Green, in two thousand and six. I believe you came on the commission July two thousand and seven?
I don't recall. But I don't remember. Otherwise, I probably would have brought this stuff up prior.
Yeah, and I, and those are.
You know, and I, I'm, again, I, if, if we don't want to review CCNR, it says, B says they shall be provided, shall, shall accompany. Their application shall be accompanied by, by copies, and it goes through, and it lists the provisions that are the mandatory, there's four of them, mandatory provisions that are in there, and the last item, five, says the above items are subject to review by the commission. So if it's the pleasure, I mean, I don't know how we, if we're going to, again, eliminate that code or change that code, then let's change the code. Let's go through a process and change the code.
You mentioned.
Have it, we, until, until then, I, I guess, you know, now I'm going to, this is slightly off, slightly off-track, but I, but just from experience, you know, I, I got to think that there's potential liability for us, for allegations that we're not following a code, you know, when we ignore the code.
Well, I.
I mean, and, and I don't, I don't know how, how you're going to, you know, I'm not saying that this is subject to any type of litigation or anything like that, but you, if we ignore the code, we ignore, you know, these are, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
I, 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 I just think we're, we're.
Art, when you have a condition recognizing the code, you're not ignoring the code. You're putting a condition that actually addresses that the CCNR should be reviewed, but you've made the decision that it should be reviewed. If you agree to the condition, you make the decision that it should be reviewed by the city attorney at a later date.
So that's what I.
It's simple. Just advise staff that you no longer find that condition acceptable, and then we will enforce the code. But this has all been transparent. No staff in the history of City of Los Alamos have been trying to hide this section of the code from you. We've simply deferred it.
I haven't said that.
So as it stands right now, city attorney goes over the CCNRs on a.
Yeah, we take it, the, um, right now, an applicant doesn't know what you're going to approve.
Right.
They don't know how many units, they don't know what the setbacks are, they don't know the dimensions. So for them to hire an attorney to draft a hundred, hundred-and-fifty-page document, and for you to review that, and then they have to go back, because they don't know they have approval yet, they have to go back to that attorney and spend more time. It's all the things that we always hear, that it's so expensive to go through an approval of process, so we're always trying to look for ways to make it less onerous on an applicant. Sometimes we have real, business-friendly commissioners who want to kind of streamline a process. This is one of those streamlined things. Lisa works in several cities, she's never seen this in any code. I've worked in several cities, I've never seen seven commissioners review a legal document like that and all agree to what the changes should be. I mean, i- it's just problematic. It's been something that's been conditioned otherwise, outside of the realm of the commissioners, and again, it's been all transparent every time. It's usually condition number ten, for some reason, it was kind of common in all the old CUPs that we looked at, all the way back to nineteen eighty with an office condo.
Generally, what happens if there's certain things you want to make sure are addressed, we write conditions saying the following shall be included in the CCNRs. You want to make sure that the garages are kept clear for, um.
Vehicles.
So they can be used for the parking of vehicles. Anything you specifically want to see, then, as the city attorneys, when we go through them, we're making sure that the common areas are going to be maintained, um, that, that, that the things that the city is concerned about are in the CCNRs.
Right.
But we're not going to really be concerned if it says you can or can't have a plant on your balcony or a barbecue. That, that's their individual thing, so, as Steve said, I, I know it's, this is not the only city where the code provides that. However, I've worked in, you know, the, the developing cities like Camarillo back in the eighties, where Pardee was coming in with huge developments. I have to say, my father's a real estate attorney, he drafts the CCNRs, they've actually crossed some of our cities. I've never seen them done, um, at the time of submission, for the very reason Steve indicates. If you guys change the project, if, you know, you modify stuff, they have to go back, they have to pay again for an attorney to.
Right.
Then modify the documents. So it's much more common to say, "Here's what I want to make sure is in those CCNRs." And then when staff reviews them and city attorney reviews them, we go through the conditions and check them against the CCNRs.
And I know we've done that, but I can't remember if it was on the, it was recently, and I, I don't remember if it's. Yeah. I was going to say right over here, well, Walnut and Catalina? I think we did that. So we've done that before, where we made conditions for them to put in the CCNR.
I think that's fine.
I think that's fine.
So it sounds like we're good with that?
There's also, I mean, there's really only four items that we're insisting be addressed in the CCNRs, and as long as those items are being addressed, I think that's sufficient.
And it can be beyond what's in the code.
Well, I would think that most CCNRs would have more than what's here.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, but I mean, what the commission, but what the commission may want to see may go beyond those.
Absolutely, but we, but we can address these responsibly without necessarily having to see.
Right.
Full CCNRs. Because they're the same issues that we're, that we're addressing.
I'm fine with it the way it is.
Okay? So, I think, uh, we can possibly move forward here. I want to make sure that the applicant is clear with the issues at hand to be addressed for a continuation. If there's any clarification that's needed as to what those items are specifically?
I'd be going from memory, there's, there's minutes for this, for this meeting, yeah.
And video.
It'll be online as well, I, yeah, I mean, do.
Right, Doug?
Yeah, do, yeah. Do we want to take a minute briefly and just give the, the four or five items that we want to have, or, or just have them look at it?
I think we should.
Well, I. We, yeah, we, we can go ahead and, and, I, I could, yeah, we can make a motion to continue.
Well, it's up to him, right?
Well, it's up to us.
So, let me, uh.
But that would be a new.
You have to a variance.
No.
He, he asked for a vote initially.
That was in the beginning.
But then his architect said, "Give us an opportunity to go back."
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's address these few items, so.
Please.
I mean, how? I think we have to come to grips with two items. I mean, I, at, at the very minimum, okay? One is the lack of covered, lack of a covered space.
Correct, which?
Which, which, I think eliminates, that, that, to me, that's a fatal flaw in the project.
Okay.
Okay? And number two is the distance from the, uh, from the R1 property.
Right.
I'm comfortable with the zoning map that we can see clearly, that the R1 zone runs along the south side of Farquhar and not at the center line.
Right.
Okay, and so there's no ambiguity as to, at least on our zoning map, where the R1 zone begins. It begins.
Talking about this one?
It begins at the, uh, at the right-of-way, you know, at the south side.
South side of the street.
Going, going, going south.
Rather than rehashing it, if we don't know what the issues are by now, we, we'll never know. We understand what the issues are.
Close this for just a moment, and, and, uh, go ahead, bring it back, okay, go ahead.
So, I'm clear with that. I think the decision that has to be made is, is what is R1 property? I am of the opinion that R1 property is everything that is located within the R1 zone. I mean, it, it, it doesn't matter what its use is, if this were a vac. If this were a vacant parcel-
I understand.
Okay?
Yeah.
Then all of it is R1. Now, there can be different uses, okay, but it's still zoned R1. The flood control is a use, and I, I agree that probably in our lifetimes, that flood control will probably always be a flood control. But when the base is developed or something like that, there may be a change. And if that flood control were to be abandoned, okay, filled in, then you're not, it, it is still R1 property. And whether it would be given like excess property to adjoining property owners, that type of a thing. So then their, their property line moves, moves over right to the, to the end. I, will that happen?
I'd be hard, hard pressed for to see that, that the county's going to go ahead and give somebody some additional property.
Well, I'm, I'm just, what I'm, I'm just saying is that it's, it, I don't, I don't, I'm not necessarily buying the intent angle, okay? I'm saying, the code, the code is plain.
Right.
And, and, and I think that's what we go by, and there's no ambiguity to that. So I think we need to address, I, I think there's enough here to make a motion, I mean, that would, one, it doesn't meet the requirement for the required parking spaces to be covered. That's a fatal flaw. I mean, and-
Yeah.
And we can leave it at that, just leave it at that, if that's, if that's a reason for denial and deny the project.
I mean, they've offered-
I've already requested continuance.
I know, hold, hold, I, I got you, hold on.
And I mean, personally, I don't think, if they've offered to redraw, you know, make some adjustments, I would rather continue it. I don't know why we would vote to deny.
Well, then I think we have-
I, I would agree with that. I, let me just say something really quick.
Don't they just resubmit plans? How, I, I'm trying to, I mean, does that create a problem with respect to the applicant? As far as this project, as we have it sitting before us? Aren't they allowed to resubmit?
If they're going to submit for a variance, then that has to be renoticed. If you deny it, isn't there, do you have a prohibition on resubmitting? There's a prohibition on resubmitting plans within a year in the city?
I don't think so, yeah. But there's a time period of kind of a, a resting period between the times they can apply again.
And then they'd be subject to a new application fee?
There, to me, there, there, I, I need clarification on that, that channel. I understand what you're saying, that that channel is in an R1 zone, the way it sits in the property line. I get that part of it. What, the part that I, I struggle with is the definition of an R1 property. And that piece of that R1 doesn't fall into that. So that's, that's the part of ambiguity to me, where it's not completely clear. It is clear that it sits in an R1. I'm clear with that. I understand where the property line is and what is there. But the definition of-
Well, one's a use.
Of residential-
One is a use, one is a property.
Right.
The property is the property. The use is how the property is used, the, in my opinion. I mean, property is the land and everything affixed to it. In this case, it's the dirt, okay? And, and however, that dirt is being currently used as a flood control channel, okay? It is still R1 zone property. Everything in the R1 zone, all the land within the, the land or the property within the R1 zone is our, is R1 property. I mean, it can't be anything other than that. Its use might be, other than a residence, okay? We have, we have, we have, you have, you have, you have streets, you have streets and running through the tract that are streets, but they're zoned R1 because they fall within the R1 zone.
Can I have you read the definition again that you gave at the very beginning? I know, I-
But you know what? Let's, can, can we just kind of look at bringing this back with everything defined for us?
I'm trying to bring it back, but I can't make, to continue it, for, for to continue it with the same situation with this R1.
But we already know what we're going to do. We want the R1 defined, we want the, whether they need a variance or not, find out what the property is. How does it, how are we adjusting it? Do we have to, are we okay?
What the applicant will have to do is he'll have to find reasoning for a variance. What is special about this particular parcel?
Okay, and that's fine.
That it justifies a variance. He's got to go back and do his homework.
Right.
That's good.
So for, for my own, can you just-
And what, I'm?
Can I just hear the definition? I think it's, has it been open the whole time? No, I think it's a-
From whom?
So let me go ahead and open the meeting.
No, the hearing?
Hearing's open the whole time.
I don't think it ever closed.
So if, if I could, please?
So in definitions, in the zoning code, and they're listed alphabetically, residential property in quotations means a parcel of real property that is developed and used either in part or in whole for residential purposes. It goes on to say, "Other than transient hotels, motels," so.
Okay, thank you.
Again, our intention, yeah, we are requesting a continuance to go back and study these issues.
We're, we're clear on that.
And we'd really prefer that you don't vote on it and deny it. That would really put a hardship on.
We understand, thanks.
I, I think also by the time it comes back in June, will there have been the council meeting already?
Yes.
So they will be aware of other issues that are of concern to the council.
Right.
This, however, is an issue that doesn't, right, for this one in particular, but this is an issue that doesn't come up on the other two that were, that were pulled.
Right, but I, I'm saying-
No, I understand, yes.
You may be able to also deal with whatever the council was concerned about.
Correct, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Can I make a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
Seconded.
Which would be June, the next regular meeting?
The next regular?
I seconded.
Okay, all in favor of continuation?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? We will continue to next month's meeting. Thank you very much. When is it?
I think I am.
I'm here.
Pretty sure that last week of June I'm up.
You better be here.
Oh, I'm not here either.
You better be here.
I'm in Oregon.
It's a, annual family vacation.
Oh, no, it's me.
I think this happened-
No, I'm here.
Oh, right, I had to notice it there or something. I could call in, you'll have to notice it. I won't be staying at a hotel, I'll be staying at a campground.
I'm looking forward to campground.
I might have to do the same. Wait, no. I can't even do that. That's crazy. That's the twenty eighth? That's why I looked, I know, I, I looked, all right. Could we? They, they won't. It is to change to a different date? Well, if, if he's gone, if he's gone and I'm gone. And then Gary wasn't here, he'd have to watch this meeting, which is fine, but I, uh-
We're debating about the twenty eighth, can we change to the twenty eighth? Hearing's closed? We didn't close the hearing, we lost it opening, continued it, then you'll just have to notice.
So when do we want to do it?
When it's going to change it.
I do too.
That week? That week?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there'll only be four of us.
Notice it for whatever new deal.
Where does everybody get to go?
Oh, right.
I have to work, how come you guys-
Do it later or earlier.
It's a work thing for me.
I think the week before, okay. Like on the middle of June, I have.
Yeah, after. Let's do it later, do it in, do it in maybe the first or second- So why don't we do it in July? Or do it earlier, I mean, the fourth.
Let me work on that, so the consensus is later, not earlier, than the next meeting. Then you just have to put a notice on the door.
Oh, you're out too?
Wouldn't we call it a special me, make it just a-
We have conflicting people who use the room. We have traffic commission and rec.
We have four people that can't make it on the twenty eighth?
Yeah.
Okay. Why are you vacationing too?
It's not even vacation, I have to work. So is that, for that, so that's been, that remains open, right, as you stated?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is items from, no. Items from the Development Services Director.
Nothing to provide, sir.
Okay. Any commissioner reports? Good there?
I have a, actually, I want to-
You want something?
What happened on the Cody Creek there, the, the bike trail?
Somebody stole all the blacktop.
What?
What were they doing there? It was really trashed for a while, and now it's all tore up.
Yeah, we're repaving it.
But before that, it was like heavy equipment going back and forth on it, or?
Okay, well, there's three projects. There's the petroleum line that goes under below the, below kind of the ridge. And they're doing potholing to check out their petroleum line.
So that would be the heavy equipment that tore it up?
Across our park and on the edge of the riverbed were two projects. LA County Flood Control shoring up the hill, then us grinding and repaving the bike path.
Which is what's happening now.
Yes, and that's why it's safe.
Okay. I just, I went down there, and it was like destroyed, and you could see these big tire marks and stuff, and I don't know what was going on.
The, the bike trail closed signs are there, sir?
No, this was, this was before it was closed all the way. There were bike riders and stuff on it, but it was already-
They ripped it up a little bit early, did all the markings of the rough spots.
I think that's dramatic.
But then they ended up repairing it.
Okay, good.
It's sand right now.
It did need it. Could be a big improvement.
So it is a big improvement. I just wish we weren't doing LA County Flood Control's work.
Correct.
You know, because so Seal Beach had to do their own project, we have to do our own project, Lakewood does a project, Colling Gardens does a project.
Yeah.
And then we inherit the future maintenance. They made us sign away.
Wow.
So we have to maintain that area for perpetuity now, because we wanted to repair it. But it needed to be repaved. It's a good project, I don't want to take away from that. It's really exciting to get done. I hope we can get fifteen years out of a new pavement there. We hit some wet spots closer to your house, and so it's taking about a week longer than we expected.
Well, I know it's a bummer that LA, that Flood Control people didn't take care of it.
Yeah.
Because, but it's good that it's being taken care of, because it's a really, I mean, a lot of people use that trail.
It is, and, you know, we built that nice park near there, so it just complements that. And again, these are Rivers and Mountains Conservancy money paying for that project.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Council, if I'm getting infringing on, uh-
Brownard?
No, no. Well?
We're all here, we can talk about stuff, right?
Well, if, it's, it's related.
Can't have a discussion.
Questions and comments have spawned out of this project, okay?
Okay, we can't talk about this project specifically.
Okay, we'll talk in general. General. Well, okay. I was, I was at the Anaheim Convention Center home, Pumbin Project, and there was a gentleman there that was drawing plans. And I said, you know, kind of said, "Hey, what are you doing? What are you doing?" He said, "Well, here, look at this." He said, and he showed me his plan. He said, "My guy wants to, you know, he wants to have a bathroom here and this and this and here." He said, "But planner code says that they have to have forty square feet, and you can't do that." So I drew it like this. So as soon as it gets approved, he can knock this wall and do that, and, and he can get what he wants. And the reason I bring this up is because basically, some of these projects, there's an issue about not complying with the code because they need extra half-space parking. It's very easy, it's for them to come in there and draw a couple walls and put a couple sinks in there, and, and it meets code and everything's good. So that leads me to my next concern. He said, "Well, applicants sometimes say that these are just plans, and these aren't the building plans, it's just the, the site plans to get approval." And applicant invited me to visit one of the properties, and I did visit one of the properties. And I believe that the plans that we saw had like a fourteen-foot driveway. And I went to the actual property and stepped it off, and it's probably not more than ten feet. Which, I guess my point is, what we see here is not what's getting built. And I don't know where the change comes or how it comes, because it seems to me, not, my second question is, and I'm trying to be generic here, when inspector goes out and they take a measurement from a property line to a structure, and they know that the code says X, but the plans say Y, which do they enforce? I'm not really seeking an answer here, this is just a general thought provoking.
I'd like an answer.
Well, you can get an answer. So my, my point is, we're, we're spending a lot of time, staff spends a lot of time to put something in front of us that we're looking at and approving, and then it's not necessarily what's getting built. And, and I take it a little bit further, and I'll, and then I'll leave it for discussion. We, we, this is, these are the first five units that we've had in this area for a long time. We had a five unit here a while back, and we got beat up pretty bad over our approval of it. And I went out and looked at that one, and I can't see how it got approved, but it did. And we have to be very careful, because we have this density requirement of seventeen fifty that's been around for decades. But when they moved the setbacks back, they basically squeezed, you know, that's, that density into a smaller space. So we, we get a heavier density. And my concern is that this project is going to be very lucrative. And all those properties along there are going to be subject to the temptation to scrape off those single-family dwellings and put five units on there because they're going to make some money. And even though these properties don't require CEQA approval because of the nature of the property, they are, as everybody here knows, CEQA is basically requires a builder, a developer, a government to consider all the, the adverse impacts and to mitigate them. We don't have to do that here, but think about it. We put, in a very close proximity, we put three properties that we removed, we removed three properties, and we essentially put in fifteen properties. So we're going to have gridlock on Farquhar if we continue to do this. So I think it's very important that we strongly adhere to the code with regard to density. And I would ask, maybe take it a step further. Can we possibly arrange a meeting with commission, staff, and maybe city council to kind of have a discussion about what the complexion of these, these properties we want as a city? Because I'm concerned about, you know, us getting extremely dense in some of these areas. So that's something I'd like to have.
Will we award the contract for the zoning code update? I think that's a perfect chance to do a subcommittee of council members, a subcommittee of commissioners, to be on that. So these issues are addressed.
Should, should we not meet before, I'm sorry?
How old that's in?
Should we not meet before that so we can consider then RPC?
We really can't get into full discussion of items that aren't on the agenda.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's something you can schedule for an agenda if we want to have a full discussion. We're kind of moving beyond a report.
So maybe go ahead and do that. His agenda is a couple of these items. But I want to make sure we don't overlook the first thing you brought up. The, the, making sure that the-
What we see is what's built.
The site plans match the building plans, which ultimately match-
The as-built.
Within reason, the as-built, right? That's critical. There's always going to be some changes on projects and some tweaks, but there shouldn't be ten-foot-wide driveways.
Now, the first inspection is right at foundation, so we can catch it right there. And I'll go out with Victor on that particular property, and we'll measure it.
Well, yeah, sure, I mean-
Absolutely.
Let's go in there.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, to me, that's important. I think it's an important thing for us to be managing as a, as a city and make sure that that happens and that there's, there's follow-up.
When they bring in their blueprints, let's call them blueprints, or a developer brings in blueprints. After they're done with planning commission, they go to an architect and have all ready-to-be-built drawings. I mean, they end up this way. Those drawings are reviewed by him to make sure they're compliant with what you approved. And then they're enforced in the field. Tom, the building official does all the inspections on the quality of the work and whether it meets building code. Tom makes sure it meets the plans. So he does all of those reviews. He views, reviews them several times to make sure that it's-
So when they trench for that footing, and they measure from that footing to the wall, and it's not code, but it's what the plans say-
They measure that footing to the property line.
Right. And it's not, it doesn't meet code, but it might meet- Right. And it's not, it doesn't meet code, but it might meet the plan as it has been amended. Which do they go by?
Oh, it'd have to meet the plan, because the plan would have to meet code.
But, but, okay, I don't think it-
Well, and that's what we'll go look at it.
Okay.
Yeah. There will be people who will always push an envelope regarding building plans. I mean, like you heard, a person's gonna change a floor plan after the city inspector leaves. People take their pool alarms off their sliding glass doors after an inspector leaves.
No.
And that's, and that's what code enforcement is for.
Again, I'm just concerned about the density that we, we will face.
Somebody building something in the wrong spot doesn't legalize it.
Right, I know.
Yeah.
I mean, we can actually make them remove it if we wanted to go that step, but-
That's why we tried to catch it early. So, we'll go-
On the Olson project, I had them rebuild some of the entire walls of the buildings, because they were supposed to do inset windows like you guys wanted for the Spanish style. They did them out flush, and I had them re, spend thousands and thousands of dollars moving those in. And there's, there's lots of things that, that are like that, you know, that we, we check, we say, "Go, you gotta change it back to this," and, you know. And if, if something's drastic, then it becomes a director decision like the resolution says, and then we, we discuss whether or not it meets the, the, what you wanted when you approved it.
Yes. We have projects over by my house. On Chestnut, Walnut, in the alleys you go down, you will see where, when I watched the plans go through, I wasn't on the commission. They were supposed to have trash receptacles back there, and they're planners now. This is before either one of you were here. I asked what happened, and it's also, on the other side of Florista, could be on the Chestnut side, the same thing happened. So you have multiple units, and I was told in their CCNRs, they were told they could just put the trashcans on their patio, which to me, I wouldn't put that trash on my patio. And they don't. They put them in the alley because they left the dead plants in the planner in the back, which to me, I'd like to really know who approved that, was that approved, and should they not put in a trash receptacle? And I think they should. And then we have another one who has the trash receptacle but uses a parking space for the trashcans. So, you know, it makes you wonder, but those are the things that happen afterwards.
We have two rebuilding trash, trash enclosures right now. One was using it as a motorcycle space, and these are mostly what we do is if, if someone calls us, we go out and we find these things. We don't want, the, the code enforcement officer's part-time, and he, he doesn't hit the whole city every time himself.
Oh, at least it's hard.
And he's found others that are, are very trashed. You know, like right now, I can point out that behind where the rite aid was, that trash can looks horrible. And we, we, it, we put it on a list. It's, it takes a while for it to happen to be fixed, so.
One last question, the counsel.
Lisa?
I'm sorry. This is my third night meeting in a row.
If, if the property, regardless of comes, if it passed code here, but if the property is developed not to code, does it become non-conforming?
No.
I mean, it's non-conforming, but it's not legal non-conforming, two different things.
Would the, would a seller have to disclose that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing, people really confuse the term grandfathered-in. You're, you're only grandfathered-in if you were legal once.
Legal.
Right.
Yeah.
You have to have been legal and meet the code once, at the time it was built.
A developer builds a property and it's not to code-
In the wrong spot.
And he sells it knowing it's not to code.
Yeah.
It's supposed to disclose it.
And that's why buyers often come and check out our zoning code. Buyers, lenders, realtors will get three visits for every property at the counter. People will do their due diligence. Sometimes sellers will even come and look, and they'll get copies of permits, and they'll check it, they'll walk it. Sometimes hire surveyors, because sometimes they want leverage to get a better deal.
Well, you're, you're quite well taken, Stephen. They come to the counter.
Yeah.
And that, and the plans look good, but do they go to the property-
Yeah.
And actually step it off?
Especially if they suspect a discrepancy. Do we go? No, we don't have a mandatory inspection upon resale of property. Some cities do.
No, I know that. We don't, I'm talking about as being, as it's being built.
Yeah.
Okay, are we good? Meeting adjourned.